Welcome, everybody.
Recording in progress.
Call to order, the July 17th, 2023 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plevka?
Here.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Weggie?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Alderman Shelton?
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, thank you. Next up is approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? Saying none, it will be approved. Item four, announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions. We have none. That brings us down to citizen comments. Now is the time of the meeting. If you care to address the board, now is the time to do so. The only thing that we ask is that you come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll be given up to three minutes. Come on down.
Look out, I brought notes. Steve Perrin, 2476 Cecilia. I'm here to talk about the Manchester Corridor redevelopment. And I just want to say that, so I've been, my wife and I lived in our house for 35 years. And over those 35 years, we've been involved with and witnessed a lot of very important, significant, controversial actions by the board. There was the sale of Frazier School and the development of that subdivision there. I don't know if anyone in this room remembers the CCC, the Citizens Communications Council, that was created for the school board. I was president of that. That was created because everybody thought there was a bunch of nefarious activity and everybody on the board were demons. And that turned out to go nowhere. Of course, there was Evan's Place and the Promenade Development. In fact, I think the last time I was at a board meeting was when the prominent St. Louis civil rights attorney Eric Vickers was here accusing the city of trying to force all of the African-American residents out of town, which of course is not true. There was Brentwood Bound. That was a big decision. I think, I think that turned out correctly. And now we have the Manchester Corridor. It's a big, big deal. I support the development. I'm not here to ask you to vote for it. I just want you to know that I know it's a big deal and it's difficult and it's complicated. And there's a lot of different, you know, aspects to it. People are affected in different ways. But I'm just here to tell you that however you, whatever action you take, as a 35-year resident, I just want you to know I trust what you do and I will support whatever action you take. And I know it's difficult. In closing, I would say that, in the words of the songwriter Billy Preston from the 70s, "Nothing from nothing leaves nothing. And if we do nothing, we get nothing." If that's the action you take, I will support it. But just want you to know, I'm with you whichever way you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Stuart Clark. I live 2331 St. Clair Avenue. And Nancy and I have lived in Brentwood for 35 years together. And we were very strong supporters of redevelopment of Brentwood Square, the Promenade. And today, I just want to let you know that we are very strong supporters of the Green Street Agreement that's out there and the opportunity that we had to transform Manchester into a new neighborhood in Brentwood, one that will be walkable to our beautiful new park that we have. In 2018, I was asked to chair a citizen-wide, a citizen-wide meeting. And we asked citizens at that time, if we could stop the flooding and if we could fix Manchester Road, what would you like to see? And it's kind of like the three Rs helps me remember it. The first thing the residents all said was, "We wanted residence." We wanted people living next to the park, people walking around that area. We wanted recreation. Well, the park obviously is delivering on that. We wanted retail. They still wanted retail, but they didn't want big-box retail. They didn't want a big-box store that would open up and then close in five, six, eight, 10 years and we end up with a big box. So retail, but controlled retail. And finally, they, they wanted revenue for the city because as our other developments age, we need to replace that revenue. We believe that the Green Street proposal really answers all of those requests by the citizens at those meetings. So, you know, all of you have put in countless hours of work and all of you will put in, continue to put in countless hours of work. And I just want to let you know that I'm here to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen back there?
I'm a New Yorker, I guess, compared to the other two. I'm 33 years in Brentwood, not 35. I am for the project. I've always been for the project. But I have a concern, same concern that I've had from the beginning. And I've communicated it, probably the Ward III people are sincerely tired of me talking about it, but I'm going to do it one more time. Simple economics 101, supply versus demand. Most of what I've heard is on the supply side. We're going to get a new hotel, going to get new offices, we're going to get 20-plus additional retail commercial locations along that corridor, several apartment complexes, condos. All that is supply. All that, customers have to come in willing to rent those locations and have businesses there or live there. And I'm hoping that there has been behind the scenes, or I've missed it, which is entirely possible, that there's been studies as far as the demand is concerned, that you're, that it's going to be able to, to complete the project. And it doesn't turn out to be vacant land and, or sitting there unused for a number of years. And that puts us right back almost to where we are now. So I just can't help it. I can't, I, I just don't feel good about, on the demand side. And hopefully, you, you all have done your due diligence and you feel strong about it. But if you don't feel strong about it on the demand side, for whatever it's worth, I recommend that you give it a good, hard look because that's a big, big obligation, all that, all that property. And I totally realize that Green Street is the one taking most of the risk as far as financial is concerned. But I want to preface this by where I'm coming from. And I'm retired now, but I have 40-plus years in commercial finance. And this is sort of my pot, to know something about. 90%, way over 90% of the customers that I've done business with over the years were successful and very easy to deal with and everything went fine. But as you might know, after 40 years, I have dealt with some defaults. I've had dealt with some bankruptcies. And it's not pretty. It really isn't pretty. You get idiots like me coming in, wanting to collect their collateral, wanting to get out of it as cleanly as possible. I mean, I have no idea what Green Street, it's not my place to know, I guess, what they're going to use for collateral for their financing. I assume it's going to be the land, but it could be accounts receivable as well. It could be a lot of other things. And you don't, I guess the bottom line is what I, what I'm saying is that I hope and I assume, but I also hope that you as aldermen have done your due diligence. Nothing's 100%, believe me. All the ones that went into fault, not, there's a few, that went into fault and bankruptcy, I didn't, I wouldn't have done, done the business to begin with if I knew that it was going to end up that way. So nothing, no one has a perfect crystal ball. But I sincerely hope that you've done your due diligence and you feel close to 100% confident that this big project can be completed with the demand out there for apartment dwellers and new businesses and a whole, a successful hotel. And you also feel confident with Green Street, with their financial position, that they can, they can withstand possible problems or issues that will come up without it turning into a major problem. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Lois Truman, 8710 Rosalie Avenue. I've not been here 35 years. I think the gentleman, truly gentleman, that just spoke reiterates my feelings of why I'm so pro for this project to be with Green Street from all the meetings that we have heard and the due diligence that has been done on the part and the fact that I have heard the Green Street presentation people say that they are very fluid in watching the market, in watching what the demand is. They are very aware, and that is one of the main reasons I liked about them, was they're not lockstep, "We're going to have this, we're going to have this." They heard, like Stu said, back in 2018, when this started, for citizens were begged to please come, give your input, tell us what you want. And I don't see one thing in the plan that was not reiterated of what, and the other R, you need a four R, Stu, you need restaurants on that list, because that was another thing that was big and local. I like that they're looking for local and demand and their record stands for itself. So I'm very happy and comfortable with the work that's been done up to this point. I commend everyone that has done that, the long tedious hours of hashing it out to this point. It's not over yet, but it's a bulk, a large bulk of this has been done. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Martin George. I reside at 2E2A Carrot Bay, United States, Virgin Islands. Let's see, I've been a longtime resident of Brentwood half my life, 20, at 2452 Helen Avenue, and no longer currently own that. And have been a commercial occupant in the Manchester Corridor since I've been a kid. And at 8309 Manchester, that houses feather craft fly fishing. My mother was a Brentwood resident as well. Um, let's see. This evening, I'd like to submit just a question. I don't believe that the PGAV planners, BLIGHT study had a public comment at the July 5th meeting. It could have, I could be wrong. Just going to bring that up and I can leave that note there. The other is, I'd like to leave with the board, or I can submit a PDF of some imagery of the buildings up and down the corridor as they stand now, just for a reference of the look of the blighted area as it is now. And for the record, I do disagree with the BLIGHT study on my own, on my own properties as well as other people's properties and neighbors in the corridor. And additionally, I'm at, I'm not actually a large fan of central planning and having Green Street be so designated to be just a singular developer in this neighborhood that I grew up in. I remember the flood studies and I think I attended one of the meetings when I was pretty young, commenting on waterways in Brentwood. And no one really listened, but it's just kind of normal around here. I can email the PDF if you'd like. That's about all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Brian Hanson, live at 8617 Joseph Avenue in Brentwood. Just want to say that, you know, I feel as though that, you know, this whole process has been not completely fluent with other processes that happened in Brentwood. And just for an example, like I understand that when we very first did this, passed the potential taxes to pay for the floodway, we did do surveys and ask residents and what they wanted to see down there. Well, that was six, you know, plus years, five, six years ago. And then we get this proposal, we assign these guys in on, in September of last year, negotiate that behind closed doors, really, tweak out the agreement, and then the citizens get about three weeks to really chew on it and understand what's really in here and how that really truly impacts them, citizens, business owners, and everybody. And I guess hats off to the planning for the Parks Division because they were able to put together a really simple QR code, plaster it all over the city and give everybody the opportunity to chime in on this development. A true opportunity to fill out the survey once or 50 times to skew it, but just an updated survey of what the residents feel of how Manchester development's gone, how this whole process has happened. And I really feel like that the city had missed the ball on really getting a true impact statement or value of what all the residents really feel like, even broken down into selections awards of how, you know, that could have really gone down and shown a better picture of demographics of how and what people really want to see down there while you guys are negotiating this, representing us, representing the business owners. And I just feel like that that opportunity is always is changing and the fact that nobody got to put their two cents in on this and this is just what we get, that's kind of what we get. So that's, I think, it's a strong feeling and it's unfortunate because I think there's a lot of positive development and I think there is some development that needs to happen down there, but I think this particular process is not the right one. Thank you.
Karen Smith. I live on Harrison. I've been a resident for 33 years. I know you're tired of hearing from me, but I feel obligated to again state my position. You all took at the beginning of this meeting a pledge for justice for all, and I'm asking you to consider the justice for all, meaning the residents and the businesses that are going to be impacted if you pass this proposal tonight and use eminent domain. As others have said, we'd like to see the area down there cleaned up, but I don't feel that eminent domain, which abuses the rights of property owners, is the right way to go. You've mentioned a couple of times that the rent down there is going to go up and the people, the residences that are down there can't afford it. But what makes us so certain that the, the retail places that we're going to put in, there will be, as the gentleman alluded to early, a demand for that at those higher rents? And I guess we would need to understand that more, but two developments that I'm aware of were supposed to look very different than they do today. So Brentwood Square and Target. They were supposed to have kind of a more of a community look with small retail stores and they were looked to look very different. And when they actually got in there to try and develop it, it, this, the numbers don't work. So I would be very concerned going into this, that some of what is being proposed is actually going to work as a gentleman referred to earlier. Also, another gentleman referenced the surveys and the public comment sessions that happened during 2018. I was also part of that. I did hear residents say that they wanted more recreation and restaurants and small retail, not the big boxes. Don't know that I remember hearing things about residents. And the comprehensive plan did have some resident in there, but not the scope to which this plan has in it. But the issue that I have, and when we've asked questions in 2018, is whether we finish the question with, "Are you willing to use eminent domain to make this happen?" We never ask anyone that. And even though at a ward meeting, one of the aldermen said, "There's a lot of people that are for this project and they're afraid to come to these meetings because they don't like it." Well, I come to these meetings to say why I'm against it, even though I don't like getting up here because the reception that I've gotten and how people have treated me over the years has been pretty disrespectful. I don't like it, but I do it because I worry about my community. You've gone up Brentwood Boulevard for a ways, all the way down Eager, partially way down Hanley, you're not going to go up Manchester. It's just a matter of time. Once this project gets underway and is developed, you'll just move into a new area. So very, very big concern for me. And just to finish, Mayor Demmett, you last time gave a, an explanation of, you know, the situation that you lived through, and I'm sorry that you had to live through that. But the key takeaway that I took away from that at the end was that you are, from what I understood, and I kind of looked you up on the web, you're a smaller law firm, right? And you're not in Brentwood anymore. So when you think of a community and the diversity of a community, small businesses, especially during the pandemic, small businesses were kind of the backbone of what kept some of the economy going. How they, you know, big companies, big organizations, they can't change on a dime, but small businesses can. And all of these, a lot of small businesses did. And we, the small businesses that were part of Brentwood, they kept their doors open and kept trying to make it work for them. And then on top of it, having to live through all of the Manchester Road development, I don't think this is a very good message to send to the business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
I'm Mark Ables, 2015 St. Clair in Ward One. I'm a Brentwood Bound supporter, very strong. I voted for it. I like how it's turned out. And I also want to see the Manchester Corridor redeveloped. I think it's very important. But I think the plan you formulated still needs work and I think this is time to take a breath and not to sign away our rights. Since the redevelopment process began, I've wondered why it didn't start with asking the folks who already own property and businesses there, what their vision for a flood-free future might be and how the city could help them improve their places in their area. That didn't happen. I also wondered why the city insisted on bringing in a, a developer to be the unelected pro-council of Manchester Road, ruling over this part of Brentwood. Ask the question and you always get the same answer. We put out three RFPs and Green Street was the only bidder. We had no choice. But you did. You could have chosen to manage the redevelopment in another way and work with multiple interested parties, and that was not considered. The RFP was not written to allow that. So now we stand on the precipice of this agreement in which the city gives away most of its power to govern in that area, along with a lot of money and hopes for the best. And here are some of the things that trouble me about this very one-sided agreement. First of all, the money. Seems every time we hear about it, it costs a little more and there is nothing in this agreement that will keep the taxpayers' cost from climbing further. In fact, there's reason to suspect that in over 20 years, it will. The city property we're selling to Green Street for $1 million. Nobody seems to know for certain how much was paid to buy and clear that property. The best estimate I've heard is 2.5 million from my older people. That would be a million and a half dollar gift to Green Street. The 19 properties are on the assessor's appraisal books at $13 million, their pre-acquisition value. Now, how did removing the flood threat make these properties worth $12 million less? Just asking. The school district remains neutral and is airing public concerns about the effect of tax abatements on our schools. I don't like that. The escape clauses, quote, "The developer may, by giving written notice to the city, abandon the redevelopment project and terminate this agreement." Period. For no reason or any reason. If the city wants out, you have to prove malfeasance and you'll be in court for years. Then there's the delegation of government authority. The redevelopment corporation is totally controlled by the developer, five directors, all appointed by the developer. If the developer wants to seize a property by eminent domain, they can order the city to do it, not ask, order. And by virtue of this agreement, you will obey. I don't like that. As far as I can tell, as long as Green Street observes the zoning regulations, the city cannot require them to do or not do anything. Now, I know I sound like I think Green Street is some wicked cabal. I do not. I don't think that at all. I think they are a good and honest company and I guarantee you, they've done a lot of good work in the St. Louis area. I've seen it myself. But they are also a private business and their first priority is to deliver a profit. It's the city's job to prioritize the interests of the taxpayers and this agreement severely limits your authority to do that. Once you sign it, it is too late to make it better. We're stuck for 20 or 30 years. I'll leave you with one question. Typically, in a negotiation, the parties come to the signing table, happy to sign, but also still smarting from having to give in on some things that they really wanted. I'd like to know if you can tell us one or two things that Green Street really wanted in this negotiation that they did not get. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on. Thank you, everybody, for taking. Public record? Yeah, I thought you, you had nobody, right, online?
No one.
Emails? Oh, we, I didn't think we were going to read.
No, we're not.
Okay. Yeah. I would sincerely, sincerely like to thank all of you who showed up tonight to express your opinion. Whether I agree with your opinion, with your statements or not, I do appreciate you taking time out to do that. As I've said before, the thing that I, I think, probably speaking for the board in general, is when people say things, but they don't show up and let us is when people say things, but they don't show up and let us know what they, what they think. And that's, that's very important. It's very important in our form of government. You're going to get your way, you're not going to get your way, but what's important is that you have a voice and you have an opportunity to exercise that and you all have done that tonight. So thank you. Next up is the mayor and alderman reports. The mayor has nothing. Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to use my time to talk about the loss this week of two chiefs, Chief Niemeyer and Chief Carabas. Chief Niemeyer, I got to know as I was working on planning and zoning and as I became an alderman, that goes back 15 years, 20 years. And he, he was a remarkable man and somebody that I cared very much about, somebody who gave great advice and was somebody who had a ton of knowledge, but was always so humble about how they presumed to tell you what they were thinking. And he was just a great, in my opinion, he was just a great man. And Chief Carabas, I did not have as much contact with him, but when we first moved into Brentwood over 20 years ago, 24 years ago now, my wife had a problem in which we needed to talk to the police. And so we, we made a phone call to the dispatcher and the dispatcher said, well, I'll get the chief to call you back. And he sure enough called us right back and my wife went through the situation and he devised a plan in which he was going to try and help her. After 20 minutes into the conversation, my wife said, well, can I come over and to the, to the police department and give you the information that you need for all of this? And he says, well, I'm on vacation right now, but next week when I'm back in Brentwood, I'll for sure follow up with you. That was the kind of guy he was. He, he lived the role and I was very proud to have known him as well. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Alderman Tice.
Alderman Plufka sort of beat me to it. Of the two chiefs who passed away last week, I only knew Chief Niemeyer and he just epitomized everything that's good about Brentwood. And it is, he's a big loss and I would also like to commend Chief Cottrell for all the work that he did to make the days incredibly beautiful for, I'm assuming for their family, but certainly for those of us who were, got to witness it. So thank you.
That's well said, Nancy. Alderwoman Sims.
I would just echo the sentiment that was said by Aldermans, Plufka and Tice. I, I knew Chief Niemeyer better than the police chief and I was, he always remembered my name, greeted me with a smile and a good story and they'll both be heartily missed.
Thank you. Alderman Waggy.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to say goodbye to Jack and Kathy. And so I'd like to do that now. Jack, I'll be seeing you around Brentwood. But Kathy, I really respect you and all the help you, you put forward on standing up our sustainability commission, just helping out in the community and you really had an impact to this town. So I'd like to thank you and it was an honor to serve with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gould.
Yes, I'd like to take a minute to thank everybody for joining the Ward Three meetings that we had, the special meeting that, that we had earlier and then the one that we actually moved. So we will not be having the normally scheduled July meeting, which was shifted to, to this last one. And also the, the communications committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow is canceled. We'll pick it up in the next month. But I did want to take a minute and, and I've got a few words to say if, if it's okay for me to, to take some time. Throughout this process, Alderman Lockmuller and I have heard it said many times that Ward Three, you know, is impacted the most by all of this Manchester Road redevelopment. Ward Three has patiently put up with decades of flooding, deteriorating commercial corridors, pass-through traffic corridors, massive flooding, flood mitigation, Manchester Road construction project. While that is all true that Ward Three doesn't take on a lot of the burden, let's make no mistake, this, any redevelopment of this corridor is a critical initiative for Brentwood as a whole. It's remarkable, actually, how much this two, two-square-mile community has been able to accomplish. It's, it really is remarkable. And I'm not talking about the flood mitigation, I'm talking about the fact that all of the commercial redevelopment to the north of our city was not easy to do. It was, it required a lot of hard decisions for a lot of the leaders that came before us. And, and it's, and it's actually provided, led the way to provide the highest level of public services to our residents without the need to significantly raise Brentwood, the city of Brentwood, to raise property taxes or even cut services. What makes that even more remarkable is, is the fact that I did a little bit of research, I've done a lot of research actually in the past several weeks to, to years in this whole thing. Since 1980, our, our, our population has been declining. I don't know if everybody knew that. It's actually decreased 2.3% since the most recent census in 2020. So I think it's important for us to realize this isn't just a Ward Three problem, a Ward Three issue. This is, this is what makes Brentwood whole. I did a lot of reflection before serving on the board. You know, I, I recognize we're a tale of two cities and I don't, I don't mean the east-west playful banter that we have. We're really the tale of two cities and the vitality of the north and the stagnation of the south. I mean, they're, you know, Manchester Road from Hanley to Mary Avenue, from Hanley to Mary Avenue, it has just become increasingly underdeveloped, unplanned, generally unattractive. Back then, I, I actually, before being on the board, I told people that it was literally and figuratively a depressed section. And there's certainly a few, few exceptions to that, ones that I genuinely love that exist, but they're, they're really not enough to turn the tide. And then it, so then it gets really kind of down to the core, we're not gaining more land. You know, the, the, really, the question that we all need to answer as a city and as leaders is, can we afford for a quarter of our city to continue on this path? This artery in this region has a ton of potential to go from congested pass-through destina, area to an actual destination, one that actually could help achieve a lot of the goals of all of our comprehensive plans since the first one was adopted in 1991. Every single one of those, if you've read up on them, said that, hey, we need a sense of place, we need to add character, community character, we would like to see creating, you know, a creation of more pedestrian-friendly mixed use, we'd like to see the growth of economy and local retail options to solidify and/or, and to also solidify and/or increase the Brentwood School District enrollment so that they can remain competitive. We also recognize that Brentwood School District does impact the most as it relates to healthy property taxes and revenue. And they did, they did remain neutral. They, they, they stated this week, or last week, sorry, that their, their tenure plan has always included the need to ask for tax levy and, and that their, that the expenditures and the revenue streams, you know, are going to require that because staffing increases, goods, cost of goods have increased improvements. And they said that in the near term, they just don't see a way for them, a meaningful way for them to boost tax revenue. But they did acknowledge that an increase of revenue from any redevelopment, really anywhere in the city, mind you, would be a long-term benefit to the district. Unfortunately, the current timelines for any of that redevelopment won't be done in time in order to offset their, their expenses and revenue forecast. So as I thought about this a lot, it struck me that another way to interpret this situation and where we stand right now is that the redevelopment of this vital corridor along Highway 100 hasn't happened soon enough. If the redevelopment was even possible sooner, the school district would have had tax benefits much sooner and maybe would have factored it into their tenure plan, thereby maybe not needing to ask as much from taxpayers potentially. So really, the, the longer this takes to revitalize into a healthy commercial district and the longer it takes to establish, the longer it takes for positive benefits for our school district to have an impact. And it's been stated many times, the city of, the city of Brentwood really doesn't rely on the property taxes as much. I mean, we do, but we get a lot of our taxes from, from sales tax. And so really, for any of these public services to remain viable, it relies on some tax and it relies on private sector and, and strong, healthy commercial districts so that we don't have to increase real estate property tax unnecessarily. Because if it doesn't happen, there are two choices. We can either cut valuable quality-of-life services or staff to balance a budget or our residential tax burden is increased. And all we have to do is look at other neighboring municipalities to see examples of that. St. Louis County is a good example of that. We're a small community. We're not just Ward Three. We're Brentwood and we rely on the productivity of all of these areas to, to make sure that we're, we're a viable, vibrant place to live. I found today an article as I was kind of doing more research in May that was written in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch and it was titled, "Latest Population Estimates Show Decline in Most St. Louis Area Cities." It concluded that eighty, all of, all but six of the 88 municipalities lost population since 2020. And of course, there's a lot of factors that we all can kind of talk about, but one reason was stated by a sociologist from St. Louis University, said, and I quote, "City data reflects a trend in which families with children are leaving St. Louis and parts of St. Louis County for areas with better schools, cheaper housing stock and more room to develop. While outlying, outlying cities have room to grow, many bedroom St. Louis County communities have zoning regulations restricting new development." We took up zoning regulations a long time ago with the MC corridor with a, with a vision to see growth and redevelopment potential happen. Now, I know it's difficult for everybody to see the forest through the trees and I, and I know these are hard decisions, but it really comes down to, and it has, this, this decision has nothing to do with whether we should partner with Green Street. I'm, I'm talking on a macro level. Comes down to, do we let it sit and hope to see what happens or be proactive and have the best opportunity for at least some control? I have spent a lot of time walking and biking down in our new trails and I, and one analogy kind of continues to strike chord with me and that's, that's an analogy of farmers who farm in a floodplain and how sometimes the most fruitful yields come from a very difficult conditions that, that precede it. And just as those farmers need to plan and wait for optimal time to sow seed, they, they really don't know. And in the end, it's, it's experience and judgment and a little bit of luck, but if they sow it too soon, it may not take root and then you've got crop failure. If they sow it too late, seasons change and they don't have enough time for it to bear fruit. So I say that to say that we've had many years and decades of, of hard work and I appreciate all of the hard work that this board, the staff, residents, previous elected officials. This has not come out of the blue. This is, this is the product of many years of many people putting a lot of effort into it and that's even afforded us the opportunity to even consider redeveloping this section of, of the corridor. Of course, the details will matter and so we'll get into, I have lots of questions for Green Street and, and as it relates to the redevelopment agreement, but I come down to the macro decision and say, you know, what do we, what do we do? And can we, can, if, if some say change is hard and understand they might be more comfortable to just wait and see. Again, I say the question really that we need to answer is how long can we afford to wait? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lockmuller.
Well, I don't have a, I'll save my comments for when we talk about Green Street, but I, I like what you said, Jeff, and appreciate your time and effort and everything you've done too, to help me at the ward meetings, to be able to answer some of these questions. You're much more articulate than I am on getting the point across, so I appreciate your time that you spent with me on things. I just wanted to take my time to thank the Niemeyer family for sharing their father with us. I got to know him too, as David knew him and, you know, he always came up to you as if he knew you for years. And I got to attend his memorial and you learned from all the other firefighters and their stories how he was a legend and how important it was that Brentwood had him as a fire chief and a firefighter all those years. And you also learned from the family's devotions and every, their memories of him, how he was a very religious man in his own right and raised a great family. And I just want to thank Lois, his wife, and his family for sharing him with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Alderwoman O'Neill.
This has to be the longest Alderman Reports on record, but I'm going to add to it.
Well, it's your last one, so.
It is. This is my last meeting. It has been an interesting seven years. I have learned a lot. I have met some wonderful people. I have come to the feeling that even though Ward Four is very different from Words One, Two and Three, we don't have single-family homes, we live closer together, we have no parkland in Ward Four, no place for kids to play. We, we have different lifestyles because we have to. Living that closely together, things are different. And where in the past, sometimes I think it was easy to overlook Ward Four. I certainly hope from now on, no one does, that we are as vital a presence as any other ward in this city and it would be great to have more input on how everybody can work together. Sustainability has been one of the things that we've all taken for granted for years and perhaps during COVID, we became more aware of just how important it is to have some of those channels work. So I do hope that the city will continue to work on that in every aspect they can going forward. It's a good, good cause and if more citizens would like to join that and be active on the committee, I think there is certainly room for that. I want to thank the staff, the department heads especially. When we have had our materials for a meeting ahead of time, at first I had lots and lots of questions, I still do, but the learning curve was sharper and now it's become easier thanks to all of the way that the, the staff, the department heads and everybody have, have answered those questions and helped me feel more informed before I got to a meeting. I want to thank them for that. I do have some regrets. One is that the playground won't be finished for me to actually go play on all that equipment. And I'm not going to get to meet Red. So I wish everybody the best. I want to come back and see how my tree is growing down in the park and thank you all for making it such an interesting seven years.
Thank, thank you. Alderman Shelton.
Yes, so this too is my last meeting as well. Very bittersweet for me. I'm still staying in Brentwood, which is an agreement that my wife and I had. For anyone who doesn't know, my wife and I are expecting a child in September. So we had to get a bigger space than our condo living currently and the only option was for us to stay in Brentwood. So serving for the last two and a half years has been nothing but fantastic. For anyone who doesn't know, this is kind of a family business for me. I grew up in this very council chamber. My dad was the economic development director through the 90s. So I grew up in this very space. So it was always a dream of mine to be able to serve and so getting the opportunity to do that has been incredible. And I know I'm maybe a little bit of a, a different person that fits the alderman build of a younger person wanting to do this. So I want to thank all my fellow aldermen and women for treating me with respect and, you know, I know something that's been happening for me is that, you know, the amount of citizen feedback we do get is a lot, which is great and fantastic. And as the mayor mentioned, that's what we are here for. But I want to just make sure that everyone realizes that this board does put in the time and the effort and I've been blown away by the amount of discussions we've had about feedback that we've received and, you know, it's really boils down a lot of times to a 60/40 decision for us, right? We're going to make 60% of the people happy and we're going to make 40% of the people not happy and that's kind of just the way life goes, right? But I want to thank everyone for, for being able to put in the time and treating me with respect. And to echo, on a separate note, to echo what everyone said about Chief Niemeyer and the other chief, another thing, I had a chance to, to attend the visitation and I was in line with our city minister, Bolokande, and it was remarkable to me, chief, the amount of retired firemen who were there and we would see a new fireman. retired firemen who were there, and we would see a new fireman with a Brentwood patch and say, oh, we don't really know who that is. We don't, you know, they have been here before previously, and just to see everyone embrace each other was truly remarkable, and I think really speaks about the family that we have in all our departments throughout the city. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, chief was a very special, special person, and as I posted the other day, you know, we lost a true public servant when he passed. He lived a very long and productive life, wasn't cheated at all, and he had a positive impact on every single person that he met, whether it's the baby that he saved in a fire pulled out of a burning house, which resulted in him being hospitalized for smoke inhalation, or other people that he saved from a fire. He didn't have to save your life to have an impact, I guess is what I'm saying. And if you're fortunate enough to know him, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And so it's a true loss. I just, I feel privileged having known him and had an opportunity to go to breakfasts with him on a number of occasions. The shack on Lindbergh was his favorite place to go, and so he'd call me up and say, let's go get some breakfast and let's talk about everything Brentwood. My other two remarks is just simply to follow up on Alderwoman O'Neal and then Alderman Shelton. I feel very fortunate being in this position. I've been the mayor since 2019, and prior to that, I served as an Alderman for three years. And one thing that I am so proud of is this board, how diverse this board is, and the different backgrounds and the different experiences that you all bring. And we're going to lose a lot of that diversity with Alderwoman O'Neal and Alderman Shelton leaving. And I have my fingers crossed that Alderman Shelton will get back into it, because I can assure you, I'm going to appoint him to at least one committee as soon as I possibly can, once he completes his move. But these two have served this city, and I know Jack will continue to serve the city. And Alderwoman O'Neal is another true public servant. She served on planning and zoning, she served on the Board of the Library, she served as an older person for seven years, and she came in and she continued to do it. And this is a very tough job, and I can assure you, there are other things she would, I'm sure, rather been doing than doing this, but she knew it was important because somebody has to do these jobs. So I'm very appreciative of their efforts, and I know we're commemorating their service. Bola?
Yeah. In dedication and service to the city, we have scheduled a tree plaque ceremony on Wednesday, this Wednesday, at eleven o'clock at the Brentwood Park Pavilion. The address is 2924 Brazo Avenue. In both your honor, Alderwoman O'Neal, Alderman Jack Shelton, dedication and service to the city of Brentwood and the residents of Ward Four, so we hope you all can join us in commemorating that day for the both of them.
Yeah, and so if we could at this moment, just as a token of our appreciation, how about a round of applause for the service of them? Down to the Brentwood, City Administrative Report, Brentwood Bound Update.
Good evening. Craig Schulte with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound Update. This report includes the July 5th and July 17th warrant list. So the first category is construction costs. One million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cents was spent. Next is soft costs. One hundred thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents was spent on material testing, legal, project management, design, and surveying fees. The only other update is if you go to the bottom of the report, the COP investment income to date, so the twenty-nine COPs, twenty-nineteen COPs, they have fully matured in all their investments. So the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents is the total investment income that you all will receive from the twenty-nineteen COPs.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Alderwoman Tice.
Can I ask one question about the timing of the GRG connector along Brentwood Boulevard and when that's going to happen?
Sure. So the agreement that you all approved on May 15th was for a MODAT-Union Pacific and Brentwood Agreement for the work that'll be going over the railroad tracks. So after that was approved, it had previously been approved by Union Pacific's legal and MODAT's legal, but then you all approved it on May 15th. It was then was supposed to go into DocuSign and just get signed by all three parties. Union Pacific, the senior manager, found like an accounting thing he wanted to change. It's never easy with him. So we've spent two months making one change that was, would be considered rather simple. I was told today that that agreement was going back through DocuSign, and it was going to go back to BOLA for signature, and then it goes then to Union Pacific and then MODAT. So once that agreement's signed, I would hope it's tomorrow or Wednesday, it's hard to predict with the railroad, then that goes to East West Gateway, who's the grant authority, and then they can spend up to thirty days reviewing that. It's a MODAT agreement, so it should go rather quick. And then once they say, all right, Brentwood's good, then we go out to bid. So we need both those steps. We need that agreement executed, and then we need East West Gateway to give us the approval to go out to bid. So best case scenario, we could be out to bid by early, mid-August if everything goes well. And then from that point on, we go out to bid, which takes a couple of weeks. We bring the constructor, the construction GC contract to you all. It'll be the second meeting in September. We'd start construction in October, and it would take, you know, close to a year to wrap it up.
Thank you for the update.
Of course.
Anyone else? Alderman Gould.
I've got a little bit of a follow-up on that. So it's come up in some of our ward meetings in discussion about, you know, entrance into the new park, and right now, there really isn't any signage, there really isn't any, you know, until Brazu Connector opens up from Brentwood Boulevard. How do people, how do people know where to go to get into the new park and park? As we continue to see construction with the playground and we continue to have construction with that connection, Russell, and is that entrance going to be completely inaccessible to the general public until it's done over a year?
No, there will be access that could come in. We'll prioritize that entrance as part of that package because there's various scopes of work. There's like Russell, which is a link, there's a Brentwood Boulevard, and then there's some bridge expansion to the south. So that entrance is a rather simple scope of work that we're going to prioritize. We won't be able to have that signal to do the left-hand turns for a while, because that's a link to the railroad. But to get that entrance to a better state than it is now for at least right-hand turns would be better than where it is now. For the signage question, there is an alternate in the next bid package, when I just spoke to Alderwoman Tice about, that has a signage package in there to help tell people where Brentwood Park is. So that'll be an alternate that's presented to you all with that GC package, to see if you all want to approve that, and that'll be a nice signage for an entrance to a park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Brings us down to the consent agenda. We have nine items. Are there any requests to remove any of the items? Are there any questions about any of the items? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Great, thank you. That brings us down to Old Business. We have three items. The first step is Bill Number 6465. Can we get a second read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6465, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance approving the city of Brentwood Sustainability Plan.
Great, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6465 into ordinance form?
I move to perfect Bill 6465 into ordinance form.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Only that I'd like to commend the Sustainability Committee for all the hard work that went into getting this plan completed. A lot of time and talent went into it, and I know, as I said, it's a living, breathing thing, but thank you, thank you very much for your hard work on it.
Anyone else?
I, the only, the living, breathing plan is, I think, the thing that intrigues me the most about this, and I like the idea that it needs to be reviewed by the committee and the Public Works Committee every five years to make sure that, as we all know, sustainability changes quickly as new technologies and everything comes online. So I like that it's a plan that is open to adjustments faster than we normally see with adjustments of plans. So that was good work, Brandon, on that, or whoever.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill 6465 will become Ordinance Number 5097.
Great, thank you. Brings us down to Item B, Bill Number 6467. Can we get a second read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6467, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance to rezon property located at 8817 Moritz Avenue from PD Plan Development Overlay District to B Single Family Residential District.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6467 into ordinance form.
So moved.
All right, we had a first and second, a motion and a second to perfect. Any discussion? Alderman Lockmiller.
I think a comment was made by the applicant that they don't quite have an acre, and under PD, you have to have an acre of land to develop. So a developer would have to come in and acquire the three properties that front Brentwood. Well, those properties equal a half acre. Then you would have to take Mr. John's property, which is ten thousand, five hundred square feet, that gets you to three quarters of an acre. So a developer would have those four properties but not have an acre. So what does he have to do? He goes to the next property. Well, the next property is a residential home, and it's zoned residential B, and I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. So my point being, under PD, we keep trying to think that we're going to assemble these properties by a developer and have something happen here. All I see that's going to happen here now is possibly a new home to be built. So I guess I would have to go against the recommendations of P&amp;Z and vote no for this proposal.
Alderman Plufka.
I think you mean vote yes. They recommend, they recommended no.
No, we'd vote no.
We'll get a clarification on that.
So let me, with all due respect, Steve, I understand what you're saying, and I believe that that's a valid point. I would just push back. I think the rationale of the Planning and Zoning Committee, I think it does make sense to me. I understand that a potential developer who hasn't emerged since this overlay was put in place, which is, at least as long as I've been Alderman, it, I will say though, that I think moving it back to residential B makes it that much harder to then try to assemble properties for redevelopment along the thoroughfare, and I'm persuaded by planning and zoning. I intend to vote against this rezoning. And that was the recommendation from planning and zoning was against the rezoning?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, anyone else? Yeah, Alderman Lockmiller.
So I guess to our city attorney, if you're voting against the recommendation of planning and zoning, you would vote no.
Planning and zoning commission recommended that the property not be rezoned, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So regardless of how you, whether you wish to agree with the P&amp;Z or not, if you wish to pass the bill, you would vote yes. If you do not wish to pass the bill and rezone the property, the vote would be no. Voting no, in fact, concurs with the opinion expressed and recommendation of the P&amp;Z Commission, but the question is, before the board, is shall the property be rezoned?
Right.
In order for that to occur, it requires a majority affirmative vote of the members of the board to pass the bill voting yes.
Thanks.
So without all that legalese, a yes vote is to rezone it, and a no vote is to not rezone it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
No.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
No.
Alderwoman Sims?
No.
Alderman Gould?
No.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman, Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
One, two, three.
Can we do that again? No.
Yeah. It's a four to four.
I think both sides make some excellent arguments, but I agree with Alderman Lockmiller in the long run, and so I'm going to vote yes on the passage of Bill Number 6467.
A vote of five to four, Bill 6467 will become Ordinance 5098.
Thank you. All right, that brings us down to the last item, which is Bill Number 64, last item under Old Business, which is Bill Number 6468.1. Can we get a second read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6468.1, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance designating a certain tract of land in the city of Brentwood, Missouri as a blighted area pursuant to Chapter 353 of Revised Statutes of Missouri, approving the Manchester Road Corridor redevelopment area development plan, approving a development agreement in connection therewith, authorizing certain actions in connection therewith, and containing a severability clause. Mr. Mayor, if I may, as has been circulated to the board, there is a one phrase change in one part of the document which has been circulated to the board. The ordinance authorizes execution in substantially the form attached. We do not believe it's necessary to amend the bill or the exhibit in order to accommodate that, and commend it to the board's attention.
Okay. So we don't need a motion to, okay.
Further amended.
Okay, great. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6468.1 into ordinance form. Okay. Discussion. Alderman Gould.
I've got a question as it relates to Section 2.1 in the developer designation. From a legal standpoint, can we have a little bit more explanation of what it means to have a sub-developer? And if any proposal within the master plan, you know, is received from a sub-developer, how does, how does that, who determines, you know, best interest of the city and all of, how's that process work?
So if another property owner other than Green Street desires to develop within the redevelopment area, the board will consider first, is that development consistent with the redevelopment plan? The, so ultimately, will be a Board of Aldermen determination as to whether that's consistent and whether that development is in the best interest of the city. Next question is, are incentives being sought for that project? And if so, then Green Street essentially has a right of first refusal, right to come in and match the offer and develop the property. If not, then Green Street doesn't have, does not have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And if, does the city have any oversight on any sub-developers that Green Street brings to the table for consideration?
Well, sure. Keep in mind that every property is going to be, has to go through the site plan approval process.
Okay.
So whether Green Street is the developer, or whether there is another party that Green Street enters into a contract with, in which case, we would have a tri-party parcel development agreement.
Okay. Okay.
So for every property, there's going to be a separate parcel development agreement. And every property will go through the normal site plan approval process that requires action by the Board of Aldermen, and so I think the short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Plufka.
Mark, I have a question for you still. Sorry about that. So the financial agreement is one thing, the site proposal itself is another, and it's been commented to me on various occasions that it remains awfully vague. I mean, the boxes are drawn in outline form, but there's no information as to materials that are being used, or actually the architecture that's going to be devised. And actually, the placement is not altogether set in stone, you know, so to speak. And I'm asking from your experience in doing this on behalf of municipalities, and on behalf of Brentwood, frankly, are we better off, in your mind, in terms of a leverage position, to use that site plan approval process on each building individually as it comes forward in terms of determining whether, in this estimation of the board or some future board, because we're going to be doing this for years, it looks like, if this passes? Do we have leverage to push back during that site plan review process to say, hey, we don't feel this is consistent with what was originally conceived, either from a standpoint of architecture and aesthetics, to the standpoint of purpose and scale and all of that?
The board's going to have multiple bites of the apple, so to speak, on every project, on every building. Because, as you mentioned, it's still going to go through the site plan approval process, the PD requirements have to be met as far as, you know, the type of architecture and use materials. So all the normal processes are going to apply. And so there are, I'm sure, going to be instances where the developer is making requests to the board, and there's going to be instances where the board is making requests to the developer, and both parties are going to have to come to agreement essentially on every parcel, or it won't happen. It's impossible at this stage, on this magnitude of a development, to know precisely what's going to occur. What we do know is that the project's going to be market-driven, and you can't, you know, if first apartments sell out very quickly, then presumably the developer would come very quickly with another set of apartments. If the apartments don't sell as quickly as anticipated, then the developer probably would come back to the board and say, hey, this isn't going as quickly as expected, but here's something that we, our feasibility studies and find is, you know, that there's a market for.
So, I'm sorry.
And I would say, keep in mind that whatever, each parcel has to be marketable to tenants, and it's got to be financeable, and it's got to be acceptable to the Board of Aldermen, and it's got to be acceptable to the developer.
So to follow up on that, if there was concerns raised at our ward meeting and at other times I've talked to residents about the notion that Green Street would get a third of the way into this, the three phases, and then take steps to abandon this project or not complete it, what policies or procedures within the financial agreement are in place to hold them to a certain timing?
Well, I guess most importantly, the city's not investing any money in the project, but the tax incentives that are received only occur for completed projects. So Green Street doesn't, starts out by borrowing a lot of money and investing a lot of money in infrastructure and other public utility improvements, and acquiring property. And only if Green Street succeeds in acquiring land and making the necessary site development improvements and building buildings that get completed, then will the economic development incentives occur. And so if there's uncompleted buildings, then there's no incentives provided at all. I think it's, and you can ask the developer this question, I think it's highly unlikely that any development will occur until financing is in place for that specifically, specific building. So I think it's a very far-fetched scenario to think that there would be buildings built that are unoccupied.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Lockmiller.
I just want to kind of touch on that again, Mark, and I think you mentioned at the last meeting, but, you know, there's, I think people are worried that they start one phase and then maybe not go into the next phase, or the infrastructure doesn't get done. And I think there's instruments like performance bonds or surety bonds to make sure that things happen. But from what you're saying right there, it's the tax abatement they get after each property's done. It's the CID and the TDD that is the incentive to get the infrastructure done.
Yeah, but look, I don't want to mislead you. There is no guarantee that the entire project gets developed by Green Street or by anybody else. If there's another pandemic, or if, you know, I don't know, some unforeseen circumstances arise that lenders just decide, well, we're not going to lend for any project, you know, let's say that there's, you know, hazardous waste that's found in the area, and, you know, it's just not developable for whatever reason. So you can't stand here and guarantee that this will occur within a certain amount of time. What you can say is, there will be no incentives provided unless development is successful.
And then on the timeline, we've been asked a lot of questions on this. I am waiting for the law more to come out. Every day past April of 2024, that gets pushed back a day that we don't have a law more. But the only exception is offering option agreements in that first phase, so that starts upon the signing of this agreement.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Could I just add one thing in response to your question about tools like performance bonds and such? Those are used when the city is paying a contractor to perform work, and then there is a bond that the contractor will complete the work for which we are paying. We are not paying Green Street to do anything. So it is in act in that regard.
Thanks.
Alderman Tyce.
Mark, could you, I just want to clarify the abatement. So on the unabated taxes and the pilots, so they'll pay either the greater of the unabated taxes or pilots and the 50% and 25% for property taxes. But on the unabated taxes, is that the year that they, what's the base year? Is it the year that the agreement's made, or is it the year that the property is purchased?
So, reread this, I haven't looked at this in a while.
I think it's 4-1.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the calendar year prior to the redevelopment corporation taking title. So the way, Chapter 353 is an odd statute, the way it's written. It has this concept of title passing through the redevelopment corporation, through a redevelopment corporation, but that's only for a moment in time. And so the question was raised about who is, who controls the redevelopment corporation, but the redevelopment corporation doesn't have any power of condemnation. They, in fact, you know, the state statutes were amended to specifically provide that redevelopment corporations do not have power of condemnation. Power of condemnation is only with the city and is initiated by further future action of the Board of Aldermen. So I just want to point out that title passes through the redevelopment corporation, then abatement begins, and the abatement is the greater of basically the taxes that were paid prior to, prior to the title passing through the redevelopment corporation, or the agreed-upon amount, the 25 or 50%. So it's kind of like TIF, if you will. So, I mean, the city's done a number of TIF projects, and you have a base equal to the current taxes, current assessed valuation on the land, and the improvements that existed at the time that the city approves TIF. So this is structured pretty much like that, where this base is established. So none of the taxing districts take a step backwards by virtue of the project.
Thank you.
Alderman Gould.
And just to clarify the definition of taxing districts for those who are in layman's term, who are we speaking about when you say taxing districts?
Well, first and foremost, Brentwood School District. School District is always the primary recipient of property taxes, but Special School District, Community College, Zoo Museum District, all of those entities receive a share of the property taxes generated from your house, my house, every, you know, every property taxpayer.
Commercial, yeah, commercial property, et cetera, okay. I do have one theme that's come up, and I know, you know, from a legal standpoint, we've heard that, you know, a lot of longstanding businesses that maybe are aligned with the master vision, you know, is there, in your experience, is there any creative way, and I know that's not usually a word that you hear in legal terms, but is there a creative way that there can be some assurance or preference or ability to make sure that we can structure this to honor the people that have been here long-standing?
You refrained that.
Is there any way in your experience that there could be any amendment to this, or does, is there anything in this that allows for some of the longstanding businesses to be incorporated into this development?
Well, you know, maybe the developer can address, as I know that the staff and many of you have expressed that sentiment to the developer, and I know that the developer has committed to work with the existing businesses to stay within the development. I will tell you, in a sense, the relocation statutes incentivize the developer to work with tenants in that regard, because certainly the developer is obligated to pay relocation expenses to both owners and tenants, and probably would be most efficient to try to keep folks within the development, within the development. And they're obviously going to be looking for tenants. So if there's a natural fit, I'm sure it doesn't take much creativity to encourage that to happen.
Okay, that's, I mean, that sounds good. I mean, I guess I will address that same question to the developer as far as, do you have experience, or can you give us some experience that you've done in previous developments that has been a mutual benefit and good incorporation of existing businesses that were there before the redevelopment happened?
I mean, I know professionally, I have in my career, and then Phil's an expert at working with tenants to find spaces that are the best for their business and for the community and the development trend. At the end of the day, the economics of a project have to work. Our concern has always been codifying winners and losers is a losing prospect for you all, for us, and for tenants. So unless you say every single tenant that is in the footprint of the development has first priority to stay, well, I mean, that obviously doesn't work, then you wouldn't redevelop it. Exactly what Mark said is right. The goal here is to have a master redevelopment that has continuity, that has synergy between users. You know, there are lots of different uses for real estate, and you want things that benefit each other. There are some uses that obviously don't. There are lots of uses that are precluded by the zoning district that the city chose to put over the area. So winners and losers were kind of originally chosen when it was rezoned. So it is in our best interest to work with tenants that benefit the overall district and match the intent of what the city put in place with the allowable uses with the master plan. So beyond that, I mean, there's a little bit of good faith there that that is our intent. It behooves us to do it if somebody is a tenant that has draw that benefits the other uses, and that just kind of makes sense.
While you're up, as it relates to variety of ideas, right, and variety of building and architectural styles, you know, there is a sentiment from a lot of the residents that live here that there's a certain amount of charm that comes with some of the businesses that are either in this corridor or other corridors, that maybe have been adapted in different ways and, you know, don't fit the contemporary version of a new retail space, but there might be some intrinsic sort of variety that actually gives it the charm. Is it, is it Green Street's goal to mirror some of that that is intrinsically characteristic of Brentwood?
Yeah, I think if you, I mean, the easiest way to speak for what we've done is to look at what we've done. And if you look at some developers' portfolio, you can tell that everything looks kind of exactly the same, which is a fine way of doing things. I think if you looked at the portfolio of things we've done, there's a lot of variety based on the built environment, neighboring uses, respecting the area you're in, and how you present that. So that is one answer, yes. If you look at what we've done, there's always a lot of variety. I think what's really important is that the city still has all of the normal processes in place that it does for any building that goes anywhere in the city. So you have to go through the Architectural Review Board, you go through the Planning Department, so that if we come in with some thing that's very unattractive, you have the option to do that. What I can tell you is, you'll never do anything that everybody likes, right? So having consistency in policy is the most important thing, because you don't want to treat anybody different than anybody else. So whether it's us acting as master developer here, or somebody building a home, or somebody building a freestanding restaurant, you want people to go through the same process to be scrutinized by the same standards, because I guarantee you, not everybody's going to like whatever the conclusion is. So, yes, I mean, there's a lot of sensitivity to that. That's one reason we're really happy to have an architecture firm, right, because we can nimbly respond to those things. That being said, they don't do all of our work, because there are certain projects in certain places where somebody is more akin to a certain kind of use, and we'll work with those people in those cases.
I think that's important to note. I mean, I think the concern that I first started to have is when you say we have our own architecture firm, is that, okay, we're going to get potentially, you know, every firm has their sort of wheelhouse, and every firm has maybe the products that work for them, but the last thing that I think everybody wants is a cookie cutter district. And so the idea of working as a partner with this city and being sensitive to some of the nuances, you know, for you to offer up that if it's not the right fit, you don't...
I would estimate that right now, we're probably working with half a dozen different architecture firms on different product types in different areas, for different reasons. Absolutely.
Great, thank you. I'll let other people talk.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Gould, don't go away. As you can see, we just passed a sustainability plan. Can you touch on some of the aspects you guys incorporate into your buildings?
Yeah, we touched on this just a touch last time, and it's been interesting to watch how this part of our field has really evolved, you know? I've been doing this 23 years now, and over those two decades, it really has drastically changed and continues to change. So, you know, for instance, when Green Street started, we did the sheet metal workers hall in the city, and it's one of the highest lead buildings in the state. Well, that was really important back then, because standards hadn't really caught up for what should be built from a sustainability front. That's really evolved, and a lot of, you know, local, state, federal codes now require a much higher level of sustainability, which is great, and that's why we look to those standards. We also use different standards for different kinds of buildings. So when we're doing multifamily projects, we generally will adhere to the National Green Building Standard. You know, if it's a commercial or industrial building, it might be lead. And the private market really incentivizes developers to do that, right? There are different financing tools you can use, your buildings are more efficient, the public is generally more in tune to that being beneficial. So we've done things like solar panels. We did the second Tesla supercharger station in St. Louis is next door to our office on McCree, bio retention, the way that we deal with stormwater. MSD is very stringent in that you have to do it, but there's different ways to do it. So we're always evaluating what the new ways to do that are, doing pervious versus impervious cement and asphalt, right? There's lots of ways to address it, using appliances that are green. There's a lot of ways to attack it, and just staying abreast of all those changes as they're happening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Else? I'll ask a couple more, then, if nobody else. So we talked about density and scale, if you don't mind, and I think we need to kind of recall or remember that we're not talking about an empty plot of land, that previous early 2000s and before that, there's an existing density and scale that's sort of in the project. Have you all looked at, when we look at the density that you're talking about wanting to add to this area or scale that you want to, have you looked at comparisons to pre-project or even pre-mitigation work, pre, you know?
We have a little bit. Can I use that computer? Just grab it. I'm an IT professional now. What's the percentage chance of this working on the first? That work? Can you all see that? Can you read it? I have printed copies, if you want printed copies of this.
We can see it.
So, yeah, the question, what was asked, was something we got. So it's a really complicated question, so I attempted to answer this question in a way that was actually digestible. So we looked at what was in the footprint of the redevelopment area in 2000 versus the plan that we're showing that's attached to the current plan. So I will caveat, and it's recorded, these are not precise numbers. These are the best takeoffs that we were able to do with our architecture software, so I believe these are very, very close, but...
Possible to increase the size of that at all.
I shouldn't have said I was an IT professional so quickly. See if I do that, does that help?
Do you want them to hand out?
That helps, I think, a little bit, yeah.
So in the 2000 plan, the takeoff that we did shows, we delineated two different things. What were parking and kind of drive lanes, or more broadly, kind of impervious surfaces, and then what were the building footprints that were there? The purple buildings on the top are buildings that are no longer in the footprint today, but were there in the year 2000. Green buildings were there in 2000 are still there now. So in 2000, there was 1,979,775 square feet of impervious area. There were 727,515 square feet of building footprint. So we would say there's a total site coverage of 2,707,290 square feet. In our plan, there's a 56% reduction in parking and drive lanes, that's down to 875,415 feet, a 24% reduction in building footprint, so 552,600 square feet, which gives you a total site coverage with a 47% reduction of 1,428,015 square feet of site coverage.
Okay, thank you. And as far, you have no way to know how much of that site coverage previously was residential, how much that site coverage was, you know, contributed to traffic congestion or anything like that?
Sure, so we had attempted to find that data, and all of the resources we have at our disposal, we could not find that, especially for the things that are no longer there. So the site coverage was something we were able to actually quantify.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess the question that I have is maybe for you and for our legal counsel as well.
Stop sharing.
I'm sorry?
You can stop sharing.
Oh, does anybody else have any questions over that? All right. One of the last questions that I have is really as it relates to the process and what we're agreeing to, and if we agree to this redevelopment agreement, does it also agree to, for the most part, the concept plan, meaning placement of properties along that we have? I mean, if there, as you know, we've had several, I've pressured you on several of these meetings, that, you know, things like the hotel and the multifamily, which you've at least provided some context of density as it relates to square footage of footprint. But they are a concern of some of ours, and making sure that that's the right fit for this area. Last, the last meeting, you did have some, I think, some good salient points on why regionally it makes sense for a hotel, why, you know, it makes sense for a potential office partner to be attracted to the area to have a hotel, and especially a nicer luxury look hotel. But the question is, does this, do we still have the flexibility and the ability as a city to influence when and where that type of, that type of development gets placed? And since this is a concept plan, you know, how much of the concept plan are we going to then be stuck with, right? I think that's something we have to be comfortable with.
I'm not exactly sure what the question was, so I'll just respond to what you said. And if I didn't answer your thought...
I'll ask another clarifying question.
We can re-wonder it together. So stood up here two weeks ago, and a lovely woman, I don't know her name, came up here and had questions about the hotel and moving the hotel, and I stood here and I said, I will reach out to our hotel partner, I'll have the conversation. You're in trouble if I'm the smartest person in the room, right? So the next morning, I called and I talked to the owner of our hotel partner, and I said, this was the question that was asked. And we had a really good dialogue, and we are open to looking at that as things materialize. The problem is, everything's a linear process in life, right? To get to a point where we were able to negotiate an agreement, where you could evaluate a tax impact study, where you could evaluate all these uses and the concept of, what these guys are trying to do, does that match, right? We had to put a plan together to do that. So everyone likes to say that we were the only developer that responded to you. The reality is, before we were ever involved, you were knee deep in conversations with six different developers. And if you recall, all six of those developers didn't want to give you a plan like that. They wanted to say, just choose us and let us figure it out. Just let us figure it out. Well, that really puts you in a bad spot, because you have no idea what you're getting, right? So in a linear process, we have to take our collective experience and expertise in what we do to say, we believe this is a plan that works. We believe this is a plan that is marketable, that is financeable, that will attract users with uses that benefit each other, don't conflict with each other. That's what we've done. That's what we've spent the last year and a half doing, if you will. I believe the plan we've shown you is very good. Any plan can always be better, that is absolutely true. And we're still learning things every day, right? Like, as the flood maps evolve, as those boundaries evolve, there will be some ebb and flow. Well, we had to get to a point, though, was a plan that you all could look at and say, is this consistent with what we laid out that we wanted? So when you're negotiating a very complicated development agreement, we really get stuck on words. You know, it's really important, and Mark will tell you, right, five years from now, somebody's going to be looking at this agreement, and they'll get stuck on a word in the agreement. So we have to try to be very conscientious of the words we use. And that exhibit to our agreement, it's called the concept plan. There's a reason it's called the concept plan. That is not called the concept plan in every document everywhere in the world, it's called different things. The idea is, is this what we're looking at materially consistent with what we believe is appropriate for this corridor for the city, right? That's the idea. So the example I gave last week is if I come back and I said, hey, guys, so I don't want to do that 55-plus building anywhere, I want to do a car dealership now. You can go, that is not materially consistent with the concept plan. And I'd go, that's true, but I really want to do a car dealership, right? And then there's a list of uses that was approved in the zoning overlay district for the M.C. district before we were ever involved. I don't know, I don't believe it involves, allows a car dealership. We further restricted it in the development agreement. From what you allowed in the overlay district specific to this, you further refined it in this agreement. So you have had a huge voice in what we can put there. So then, when we come back and we want to do a hotel, there's some chance, because they're now evaluating, like we asked them to from the meeting two weeks ago, maybe there is some scenario when we get to that level of development, we come back and we say, she is great, the woman who stuck up here, I'm going to hire her because she had a brilliant idea, we want to put the hotel up there. That is not impossible. I don't foresee that happening, because I believe that where it's located now is a good spot for it. But we're doing the evaluation, like we said we would, because we're partnered together for a long time here. That's just the reality, and that's how the agreement is set up. Does that make sense?
I mean, I think it gets to the point of partnership, and does the city lose control by getting into an agreement with you all, and I think that's the biggest concern that people have, and, you know, hearing that...
People have this notion that the city is somehow giving something up by entering into this agreement. And the mayor, or the city attorney, or Mark could speak better than I could, the city is legally protected a lot better than we are. The worst thing I can do is come in and make an enemy of the city. I don't want to fight with the city for 10 years. I don't want to come in and try to force something through, and then every conversation, every approval, everything we do is difficult. That's a terrible idea, right? I mean, working together is the point. You know, a lot of developers don't respond to RFPs like this, because they don't want to work with you. They don't want to be in partnership, they want to be smarter than you, and they want to come in and just do their thing, build their big box and leave. And that's just not our approach, and we believe it served us well, and served our city partners well.
Thank you.
I'll give Bola a copy of that presentation also, so you have it, just for the record.
My last question is probably for our planning director, and it's more just a confirmation as it relates to traffic management, corridor access, traffic studies. Can you clarify that this would be, if, say, building A comes to you, because this is going to be, complexity of this is a whole corridor that's maybe broken into phases, the phases are make-believe phases right now, essentially, that may shift, but every building is going to come to, you're not going to get a phase...
Correct.
...presentation.
Correct.
You're going to get a building, building A, for example, let's just say, is now come to you for some review, and that would include a traffic study. Would the traffic study take into account the master vision and plan?
Yes, it would do both. It would address the traffic impacts that particular project would create, as well as review the parking for the entire...
Proximity.
proximity area for any shared parking agreements that would be needed, or anything like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Wagy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neill?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, bill number 6468.1 will become ordinance 5099.
Thank you. Brings us down to new business. We have two items. The first up is resolution number 1453, and I believe, who's presenting on this? Bola? Whitney?
Yes.
Good evening, Whitney Kelly, on behalf of the City of Brentwood. The Planning Department and Planning and Development Department is currently short-staffed. Our building official left at the end of May. We have not had success in getting a new person to fill that role. We also had the senior multidisciplinary inspector plan reviewer position that has been open, and we have not had any good applications for that one. And our code enforcement officer is intending to fully retire, he was part-time, to fully retire at the end of the month. So through the municipal league, they have this IBTS, the International Building Technology Services, that can help fill in until we are able to hire new employees, and then help us get back in track with all of our permit review, code enforcement, and inspections as needed.
And instead of taking this to Public Works Committee first, we're bringing it to the board. We ran that by the chair of the Public Works Committee, is that correct? Alderman Wagy?
Yeah, that's correct. Due to the urgency and the time-sensitive nature, I recommended bringing it directly to the board. We are falling behind, I'm hearing it from residents, and I think this is something we need to move quickly on, and I support this effort.
Okay. We have any questions? Yes, Alderwoman Tice.
Yes, this seems like a great solution, and I look forward to seeing how it works. And I did notice a review of pretty 45 days, so we'll be reviewing it, so presumably the Public Works Committee will be also helping the city, helping the staff do that. But my question actually is about this GovModus software, and it looked like they have something called GovModus, and we have myGov, and do we, do our residents then have to use their software, does the city have to use their software?
No, they will be using our software.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Plufka?
Yeah, Whitney, so my only question had to do not so much with, I mean, I think it's a great idea, I just didn't understand from looking at it, how the transition would go once we fill, you know, with somebody we hire. What's that transition look like? Is that, is this a contract that can be...
We fully see this as extending beyond just the hiring of our, of the vacant positions.
Oh.
Well, y'all just passed it. But with Green Street coming on board and some of the larger projects, we can certainly rely on this agreement and our partnership with IBTS to help fill in for the larger projects of those reviews. They do take, the larger buildings do take a number of time to sit down with each plan, yeah.
So this strikes me as some kind of, it's like an on-call kind of service.
Correct.
It's not something we have to contract for in advance, we have to predict what our needs are going to be, it's just whatever our needs are going to be, we can fill them in this way?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Alderwoman Tice?
Sorry, I have another question, and we didn't do it at the committee level, so it's funny to be so unorganized here. But are there fees? How do their fees differ? Do our residents still pay what our fees are, or there were some fees referenced here, and how does that work?
They would just pay the normal building permit fees, and then our, we would reimburse the IBTS for their services. There is a difference in the pay scale, but I've estimated that, you know, for a new construction of a home, we would still be in the positive. We would also, for like code enforcement and those type of things, we would also rely on the salaries that we're not currently paying out to cover that difference as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we need a motion to approve resolution number 1453.
Don't move.
Second, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Pluf?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Wagy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neill? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Last item under new business is bill number 6469. Can I get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6469, first reading, and ordinance authorizing Ameren Missouri to provide monthly successor connection reports.
Bola, are you handling this one?
Yes, I am, Mayor. In the past, Ameren, Missouri had provided the city with what is called a successor connection report, and it would allow us to see new accounts, utility accounts, being opened by residents moving into the city, and there's been a lapse in time in terms of trying to get that report, so we're just trying to reestablish that. trying to reestablish that connection and provide it to, for instance, Brentwood Forest and the Planning Development Department as they process occupancy permits.
Thank you. Alderwoman O'Neal, would you like to say anything on this?
Yes, I would. This could possibly be a lifesaving event, passing this. When I moved into Brentwood Forest in 1968, the cul-de-sac I live on had 10 owners. We now have 10 owners and five renters. I don't know all those renters. We've had more and more renters come in, whether through investments or whatever, and some of them are there and have never registered with the city or with Brentwood Forest. We've had an incident where a woman was injured, and we did not know who she was, that we did not know the condo she was staying in was rented, no one had registered, she didn't have her name on anything, we had no idea where she should be taken and what could happen. Certain landlords have not been responsible in telling their tenants that they need occupancy permits and have not done it themselves. And so for those, we have had huge problems in trying to have this connect. I did not know this avenue existed when we figured this out several weeks ago. It sounds like a very good solution to this ongoing problem, so it would be really worthwhile for Brentwood Forest, as well as other rental units in the city, to do this.
Thank you. Alderman Plufka, sorry.
Thank you. I make a motion for a second reading.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I was just going to say, time is of the essence on this, so we would like to pass this tonight. Any discussion on the motion for a second read?
Seconded.
I'm sorry?
It was seconded.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill number 6469 by title only, please?
Bill number 6469, second reading and consideration for adoption, and ordinance authorizing Ameren, Missouri to provide monthly successor connection reports.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to perfect bill number 6469 into ordinance form.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, bill 6469 will become ordinance number 5100.
Thank you. Brings us down to the last item, which is the second round of citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board, now is the time to do so. Same rules apply. If you would, just come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll be given up to three minutes. Have anybody online?
Sir.
Okay. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, come on down.
My name's Anthony George, I live at 9137 Lawn Avenue, and own a business in the corridor that's being redeveloped. So I've asked for support for the last year on record at these meetings, I feel like I haven't gotten much support as a path forward, as a business owner, as a resident. I've had people to my house, Aldermen to my house. They've listened, they've been kind, they've been respectful, but I don't feel like there's a path forward for the people that own properties or live here that have a need for more information, or want to see a path forward. So, not going to ask for that again, but I will say, it doesn't make sense that if I'm a business owner and a resident, and I'm requesting that for the past year and haven't been listened to in a sense that I feel like those questions have been answered, it's pretty defeating. I will also ask a question that, I don't understand why surveys and polls haven't been completed. If I were the mayor, if I were the Alderman, I would want to know that the people support what I'm doing. I believe it's your role, and as a republic, it's the duty that you guys serve the majority of the people. So, I've asked that many times, I don't know where those polls are, I don't know if they have been done, to my knowledge, they have not. I don't think it's a matter of cost, it can't be more than several thousand dollars, I don't think it's a matter of time. Today's age, you could send it out, you could do it on virtually social media platforms. We've had gatherings here at the city hall, we've had gatherings in the nice library, where a lot of people have attended, and again, I don't feel like there's been an effort to ask the people if this is what they want. I think there's been a lot of questions to developers, I think there's been a lot of questions at these meetings around where the buildings are placed, but I think the core, the primary responsibility is to ask the people what they want. If the people were to disagree with this, the majority said, "This is not what we want", would you guys still go along with it?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Deborah Barrett from Brentwood Forest. Just a quick thank you to Kathy and Jack for everything you've done for us over the years, we really appreciate it. It's going to be a loss without you all, but we are looking for replacements. I don't think anybody can fill your shoes, but maybe they can try. So, just a big thank you to both of you for everything you've done for us, and also thank you for the Ameren information, that would be incredibly helpful to Brentwood Forest if we could get that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Martin George, 2E2A Carrot Bay, once more U.S. Virgin Islands, Island of St. Thomas. It is a fact that the Blight Study Supplement that was taking place on the special meeting on July 5th with the special board was not up for public review and comment after that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
We are adjourned.